It's 3 o'clock on Monday, February 10th. And we are in the city council chambers on the second floor. And with me are two other council members, John Weber and Wayne Kraus. My name's Tom Lamar. And our acting city supervisor -- there's Wayne, he's got his name tag. Our acting city supervisor today is Bill Bellnet. And the first item on the agenda is the approval of the April 27 minutes.
I move we approve those minutes.
Thank you, John.
Yep.
And Wayne's along with that too, so we'll approve those minutes. The second item on the agenda is the Moscow farmers market policy violation appeals process with Kathleen Burns.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Kathleen.
So, in your packets, we identified an appeals process. And I put it up on the big screen in case you had questions. In the past, we've had penalty process in the farmers market policies, but we haven't had a formal appeals process. So this is, in fact, a formal appeals process. If a vendor has a violation and they're not happy with the results from either the market manager or myself, then they can go up to the city supervisor or a designee. And if they're not happy with that, ultimately, I guess they could go up to the city council. But we did identify the city supervisor as the person if they're not happy with the market manager or myself.
John.
Yeah, Kathleen, when we discussed this before, I believe you said that the actual use of an appeals process has been almost nil.
Correct.
Because just about all of the issues that are brought up during the year are handled with a conversation.
True. And usually, that's the first penalty. We write a letter and inform the vendor, and then we have a conversation with them after they've had the letter. And usually, there's corrected action to the letter, and there hasn't been a problem.
Okay. That's what I remember.
Yep. And we keep all the letters on file per season, and they average about two per season. So that's two letters in six months.
So you would be the person who would answer some of those letters, and the market manager would be a person who would answer other letters. How is the decision made?
Usually, the way we do it is Barry, our--
And I'm gonna have Rod come up and add to this, too.
Yep. The current market manager, Barry McGarrett, will let me know of a violation, and he'll have a conversation with the vendor. And if there's not a correction per conversation, then I'll draft a letter and deliver it to the vendor. And then, in the letter, I ask that they work with the market manager to correct the issue at hand, whether, for example, it might be tent weights, or it might be a fire extinguisher, or just small things like that. And usually, it takes care of it.
The only thing I would add is that the original farmers market policy really didn't have an appeals process. If the decision of the market director or the arts director, whatever their decision was, the person could only file--
Speak up.
The person could only file a complaint. So last time, we were directed to come up with an appeals process. And so the appeals process basically is an aggrieved vendor at this point when they get violated by the market director, who's the first person. If they have a complaint against the violation, then it would go to the arts director. For some reason, the arts director, I mean, the market director wasn't there. Kathleen was there, or the arts director was there and filed the violation. Then they could appeal it to the city supervisor. And as a process would be, they would have three days to file a written contest stating what the alleged violation is, and also a reason statement as to why that violation is not against the farmers market policies. Then the person who's doing the appeal, reviewing the appeal, would have two days to make a decision to either uphold this original decision or overturn it. We did that in such a short period, so it wouldn't affect, would be resolved by the next market day.
This appears to mirror the other appeals processes that we're utilizing for other agencies also.
Correct.
Which is good. And the reason we went to this type of appeals process was it, in most cases, not all, but in most cases, it now takes the city council out of the equation. It stops with the city supervisor. City supervisor is the final determining authority.
Correct.
And the reason for that was because sometimes, more times than not, the city council tends to think with their heart, not with their minds, and not with the law of the land. And when these are determined, there's rules and regulations that are either being broken and/or followed. And so that's the determination to be made by you, and then ultimately, the city supervisor if necessary. Does that all sound correct and proper?
Mm-hmm.
Would that then mean that neither Kathleen nor Gary have a heart?
Oh, they have a heart. You know what? It doesn't get in the way of intelligent decision-making, too, so.
It's good enough for me.
My question has to do more with the various steps. So there's the market manager, and then there's yourself. Do you, this process here with one appealing, you know, if the market manager's making a decision, then you're the person that might hear the appeal. Does that suggest that you two, at times, do not operate with the same voice? You're not consulting on the process in advance?
No, we would be consulting.
So if he's making a decision, you've already been part of his decision beforehand?
Yeah. So we consult each other on different problems within the market. And we tend to take a peacekeeping approach before we go into violations and letters. And we do talk to these vendors together. And that's usually where it stops.
So in that case, so you would be then hearing an appeal--
Correct.
That you've already heard--
To a decision. Yep.
In the decision-making process. So I guess what I'm wondering is, in that case, I'm wondering if maybe they should all go to Gary, the city supervisor.
Now, let me see if I've got a--
So let me try to understand what--
Well, I think I've got a different take on it.
Okay.
This, somebody in the market has an issue, one of the vendors has an issue, on a given date. So the immediate thing is they go to Gary. They go to Barry.
Correct.
Say, "I've got a situation here," and they tell Barry, and Barry says, "Well, here's how we're gonna take care of it." Then it's either gonna be good or bad. And if they're not liking what Barry says, then it's gonna go to you. You're gonna go to Barry, and you're gonna get your information from Barry, as well as the vendor, and find out, okay, both sides of the story. Then you will make, you will render a determination at that particular time. And if the vendor's not happy with that, then the vendor can take it on up to the city supervisor. Does that sound right? That's how I understood it.
But that's not how it's set up to go. You only allowed one appeal, and the decision-maker, that decision would be final. So if the market manager, not the market director, the market manager found a violation, then they would appeal it to the arts director. But if, for some reason, the market manager wasn't there and didn't make the finding for the violation, and it was the arts director that did it, then that appeal would go to the city supervisor.
Hmm, okay.
I mean, that's the way it's written.
That's fine with me.
Because, let me go back a little bit. Our market manager is on the ground from 5:00 a.m. to about 2:30 p.m. The arts director is not on the ground from 5:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. every Saturday. So I'll have an observation maybe at 10:00 or at 8:00, and he might have had an observation at 5:00 a.m. So there's different things that happen in the market, and we communicate between the two of us. But a lot of times, he needs to have some authority by himself, without me there, if he sees a violation.
Okay. Bill?
Just to clarify, this appeal process isn't effective until somebody's been penalized?
Correct.
And so?
So in the packet, we have the penalty form that we fill out, and they respond to, and it's usually just a first offense with a letter and the penalty form. And then, if they don't correct the action, or the behavior, or the violation, then we take it farther. But--
So the initial conversation Barry may have with a vendor to get something corrected isn't being penalized?
Correct.
That's just an effort to try to correct it?
Yep.
Then if it repeats, it's not corrected?
Then we go into a letter and this form, and then if they're not happy with myself with the letter and the form, and they wanna appeal that, and they don't wanna correct their action, then they can appeal the--
And the letter and form is almost always gonna come from you?
Yes.
So it's more likely that most of these are gonna be handled by the arts director that would be appealable to the city supervisor, who would be an independent third party outside in detached from the situation?
So we'd still have a chance for one more person, or that person would have a chance for, yep, okay.
Yep.
There are two members of the farmers market commission here. Now, the policies originally came to the city council from the commission. This one question didn't go back to the farmers market commission, because it just went back to our legal department to come up with the appeals process at the request of the city council. But I just wanted to know if either the two commission members wanted to add anything or say anything, or I'm not saying you need to, I'm just giving you a chance if there's anything you needed to say or wanna say anymore about that. Joanne, if you do wanna come up, come up to the microphone.
Sure.
And introduce yourself, please.
Joanne Manita, member of the farmers market commission, 203 South Howard. I didn't see the document, but is this a first offense appeal?
I don't think so. I think it's the--
Or is it the third offense that we're--
Third. It's the third offense.
Correct.
So that's the--
Yeah, because--
So it's down the road.
So many--
Right.
Things happen along the way.
Yep.
Just one question. Do we have appeals process, say, for the parks and recreation, for the pool, and things like that?
There are appeals processes throughout city policies that mirror this kind of a process, where people would have an opportunity to then take it to, say, the city supervisor if they had an issue with a decision made at, you know, the director level of a various department.
Thank you. That's good. Anything else?
I think we're--
I'm good with it.
I think we're good with what we asked for, so I think we can just move this forward to the Senate agenda.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Does that sound good, Bill? Okay, thanks. The next item on the agenda is the Moscow Human Rights Commission request for state legislature letter of opposition with David Duke, chief of police. Thanks, David.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. Last Friday, February 6th, the Human Rights Commission delivered a letter to Mayor Lambert and to all council members regarding a disturbing legislation action that's currently occurring in the House of Representatives in Boise. Two bills have been introduced that will quash our gender identity and sexual expression, city ordinance which went into effect April 1st of last year. Included in your packet is the letter, the two bills that are currently having their hearings, and also the city ordinance. What I've asked today is if you'd let Chair Ken Fontz of the Human Rights Commission come forward and talk to you about what the Human Rights Commission has done with the letter, and to present his concerns on how these bills will impact our ordinance if they become law.
That'd be great. Thanks. Ken, could you please come up?
So Ken Fontz, Chair of Moscow Human Rights Commission. The Moscow Human Rights Commission had met when we had heard inklings about this bill, and another one similar to it that was earlier. And so we had talked about it, and we then voted unanimously to send you this letter. We believe that Representative Luker's bills, HB 426 and 427, I believe, would possibly, I mean, the legal decision isn't 100%, but it does seem like the legal people that we've consulted have said that it would either make the Moscow ordinance unenforceable or ineffective. And so we were concerned with this idea. And I do know that people in the other cities that have these similar ordinances are concerned with it as well, because I know the mayor of Boise spoke out at the legislative session against the bills. And so there's several layers here that we were hoping the city council would think about. One is the discrimination itself, and we feel that the bills are discrimination under the guise of religious freedom, that that's being used as an excuse to discriminate. And the bill, while directed mainly at the LGBT community, is worded loosely enough that you could discriminate against single mothers, you could discriminate against women the way they dress. There's a whole list of things that are on there, the way it's worded. And so we've been working through the Northwest Coalition of Human Rights to get advice. And Tony Stewart in Cootney County had several lawyers look at it up there, and that was their determination, that it would make it difficult for us to enforce it. And so we were concerned, on the discrimination end, that this promotes discrimination. We believe it's bad for business in Moscow and Idaho, because most of the major companies do not like these kind of, you know, discrimination policies. And they would think twice about sending their people here. So we're concerned about that. We've already had issues in the past with images that we're trying to counteract for Idaho, even though Moscow doesn't always fit into those images, seen as kind of an oasis in there, but still, you know, it gets to us. So all the discrimination issues are part of it. The other part is that if it does cause trouble for our city ordinance, then what that means is that it would be hard to enforce, it would create legal challenges, it would incur expense, basically, because they could argue against the ordinance, saying that it infringed on their religious beliefs. This, I'm not sure of the exact process, but I'm assuming it would end up going to court, it would cause more costs and issues along that nature. Or we would decide it's too expensive to not enforce it, period, which then makes the whole ordinance worthless, and then the discrimination continues. So I think that's it in a nutshell, is there kind of double issues going on there.
That sounds good. Thanks. Did either of you have questions for Ken? I was gonna invite Rod to also come up and address this, if there are any questions. Rod, I know that you presented at a human rights forum that the Human Rights Commission had on Thursday evening, specifically about our ordinance that we passed on April 1st of last year, and the relationship with these, one or both of these bills proposed in the House.
I can address those. I just actually looked it up on the state's legislative website to see what's going on. They both have been referred to the State Affairs, but what was known as House Bill 427 has actually been reported out of commission and placed on general orders, so I would expect that they're gonna take that up here very shortly. The House Bill 427, basically, what it does is, under the Idaho state code, there's a section called, or there's a whole chapter called, "The Free Exercise of Religion," Religion Protection. And the 427 bill basically would extend the protections of that to non-governmental actors. So right now, the way the law's written, if the government acts and enforces somebody against a religious belief, they can use that as a defense. This, I think, as I read it, it would apply towards a private cause of action between two private parties. They'd be able to use their discrimination under the name of religion as a defense. They'd be able to raise that and show that it was their deeply held religious beliefs as to why they denied a certain person services. The House Bill 426, which is a whole new section under that law, and basically, that would provide, saying that a government can't deny a professional or occupational license to anyone based upon their exercise, the free exercise of religion. How I could see that affecting the city is, we issue, for example, taxi licenses. We would not be able to sell somebody that they couldn't have a taxi license if they were driving around saying, "We're not gonna pick up anybody based upon their sexual orientation or gender identity," as long as they could show that that was their deeply held religious beliefs, which I don't know how you do that. But that's how I think that it would affect our ordinance. Somebody'd be able to use that as a defense if they were charged with violating, or being discriminatory towards somebody who has sexual orientation or gender expression or identity.
I was involved in writing a draft letter to Moscow city council members, put together a draft letter to the Idaho legislature dated today, and it's not very long, I can read it pretty quickly. We wrote, "We are proud that on April 1st, 2013, the Moscow city council unanimously passed a city ordinance, ordinance number 2013-06 prohibiting discrimination in housing, employment, public accommodations based on sexual orientation and/or gender identity and expression. This anti-discrimination ordinance provides equal treatment and protection for all of Moscow citizens. We understand that currently, there is movement in the state of Idaho, as exemplified by recent introduction, or introduced bills, HB 426, 427, to avoid all city anti-discrimination ordinances dealing with sexual orientation and/or gender identity and expression. We see this effort as an infringement on the rights of the cities of Idaho to pass our own ordinances and policies. Local jurisdictions best know their citizens, and that should be the most fundamental basis for ordinances, not preemptive legislation from legislative bodies far removed from local issues. Moscow is a wonderful place to live, and we wish to continue to support the equal treatment of all our residents. Providing protection from discrimination for all Moscow's residents is a major part of treating all people equally. In addition to this fair and balanced treatment, we believe that such policies help to promote the friendliness of our climate toward businesses and employees who may choose Moscow over other locations. The University of Idaho is located in Moscow, and as such, our city becomes home to many who apply for positions at the university. Sadly, due to the lack of anti-discrimination ordinances, the city and state have lost the first-choice, highest-functioning employees in the past. They choose to work in places where their basic rights are respected. Applicants look carefully at the social and legal climate of the city in which they would be living. Lacking adequate or even meager protections, highly qualified candidates have declined employment here in favor of other states. Moscow's current ordinance provides assurances that make our city attractive to both businesses and employees who can help enhance the economic climate. The religious rights of Idaho residents are already clearly and strongly upheld within the Idaho state constitution. House Bills 426 and 427 are unnecessary toward this end, and instead establish a divide among many of our proud residents. We urge you to oppose these two bills. We stand by our right to pass an ordinance to maintain our equitable treatment of all people with respect and dignity."
Is that a letter in our packet?
No, I emailed it around this morning. So you just would've gotten it this morning.
Yeah. Make sure that gets into our packets next time.
Yeah, well, we just got it. This whole thing's happening pretty quickly, so.
Well, I can't respond to your letter, Tom, because I haven't read it. I mean, there's parts of it, I think, sound good. I certainly accept the basic concept of what you're talking about here. The biggest problem that I have is that we, in good faith, passed an ordinance that we all passed unanimously and believe in it. And now we have the state legislature telling us they don't think they want us to do that. I take great umbrage at that, if you could put it that way. You know, in the state legislature, the state of Idaho gets very upset when the federal government tries to still tell the state what they can and cannot do. Yet now, they're turning right around and telling the cities what we can and cannot do. And that in itself bothers me. I suspect I would support a letter, but I would like a letter that's very, very much to the point of the order of what I just said. I don't think it needs to be all flowery and a feel-touchy-good-feel-good letter right now to the state legislature. They need to be shown the facts. It's economically disadvantageous. It is going against the rights of local government to do what we think is best for our own citizens. That's the flavor of the type of letter I would like to see. And it doesn't need to be long, it can be short, and very much to the point.
John?
I agree with you, Wayne. I think that the ordinance that we have takes care of Moscow real well. We have gotten ordinance, even though I was not on the council when that went through, 6 to nothing, I probably would've voted for it, had I been there. But the issue that we've got here, I think, is more an issue of, as you said, the state deciding with some very, little bit of foliage over it, and calling it deeply held religious views, to try to, at the very best, weaken the ordinance that Moscow and six other cities have got. And I think it was brought up that it's possible that unwed mothers or other people could end up, and I think that's the way we ought to approach it. If we send a letter at all, it ought to be, as you said, a base letter saying, essentially, the state of Idaho does not like the federal government sticking its nose into our business, and we do not like the state legislature sticking their nose into the city of Moscow's business. Should be said in a much nicer way than that, but I think that's it. So I would, I'd really like to look at a letter that approached it from the way you said.
And addressed to our local legislators.
Yeah, okay.
They don't basically butt out.
Yeah. Well, I'm certainly very open to any editorial comments on the letter that we've drafted to date, and we can turn this around and get it out with whomever wants to sign it. I'm not sure we, perhaps we don't wait one more week and have it go to the full council, but maybe we can edit it this week and sign it as we like.
So is this something that you want the council to distribute as the official position of the city? Should we circulate it among the rest of the council members to get their review of that letter?
Well, I did circulate it this morning, and again, as we heard, that people haven't had a chance to read it yet and respond. I think the only person that responded so far was Walter, and he commended the letter, but didn't wanna, you know, send it off.
I think the lender he was talking about was this one.
I don't, I don't think so, but maybe he was referring to something, maybe he was--
If I may.
Yes, please.
If this is going to be an official city position letter, then this needs to go before the full council, at a council meeting. Other than that, it can only be an opinion letter, signed by whatever council members want to sign it. That's what I think.
Yeah.
So I guess that was my question, is how do you wish to proceed? We can certainly work on drafting a letter and getting it before the council on Tuesday.
How fast is moving through the legislature?
That was, I was gonna ask Rod that.
I don't know how fast.
Well, it would seem to me, we've got, it'd be worthwhile to take another week, let's get it to the full council, let's vet this thing out just a little bit, let's get it to say, if in fact, we're going to send a letter, let's get it to say what we want it to say, and then get it out next week after the council meeting.
Okay.
The Human Rights Commission's recommendation was that what we would like to see is the city take a position on it with an official letter.
Yeah, so it'll have to go to council.
Yeah, that's what we were hoping for. Now, we would take individual council members signing a letter.
Now, we would take individual council members signing a letter, but we would prefer the city take a position.
I would agree with that. I would prefer that the city have one letter that we send in, as opposed to multiple people or, you know, some subset of us signing it.
Let me suggest something else-
Yes.
That would be even stronger. We have seven cities that have taken and created their own legislation. How well can you communicate with these other entities and put together one single letter signed by all entities?
I'm not sure, I could check on that.
I think that would be a powerful-
I do know the mayor of Boise and the city of Boise spoke out at the legislature at the hearing on the Luker bills already, and I know that Court of Lane has been active doing this. I'm not sure about the other cities.
It might be an issue where if we get all, seven people trying to get, agree on a letter, that we can never agree on what it needs to be said, so that may not, that might not work.
And it may take a while to get all seven.
I think, right, that could be difficult. I think we should at least get our letter off, and I think, I've been in touch, I spoke out at the Association of Idaho Cities meeting last week in Boise, didn't get too terribly far in that comment period, and I've since sent an email to the executive director of the AIC asking for an opinion on what it would take to have an AIC opinion on this, Association of Idaho Cities, but I have not received the feedback on that. But I have been in touch with Boise city council members to see if we can work with them on something more collaboratively. How'd that go? Still communicating, but I think we can, I think there's definitely interest in making something happen. They've actually been, you know, in the hearing room testifying against the bill, so I think that the sentiment is there. I don't know if they're actually submitting a letter as well.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they're putting a letter since they were testifying.
But, Bill?
If you'd like, administration can certainly work on an amended letter in accordance with the direction that was received today from the committee, circulate it among the council, and work to get that in the packet.
That would be great, and I think you might, you've got it in your, so you could, okay, that'd be great, thanks a lot.
Now, this particular issue is also going to go in front of Public Works Finance?
No, it's only scheduled here.
No, this is not on the agenda. What we'll do is we'll take a letter, it'll have the recommendation. So this committee has supported providing a letter to the state legislature with some amendments, as has been voiced. We'll work on drafting that, and we'll put that on the full council agenda, not on consent, but as a regular agenda item on Tuesday, and then we'll circulate the letter, the revised letter, among everybody prior to the meeting, so we can try to get that finished version of letter in the packet for Tuesday's meeting.
That sounds great. Sound good with you, John?
Yeah, I can.
Wayne?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe that is the last item on the agenda.
It is.
And that puts us at 35 minutes for the meeting.
Not as good as a couple weeks ago.
I know, I know, we got pretty good, but these were, these were good juicy issues, so.
I never did get that letter.
I'm sorry, I'll send it to you again.
Well.
Thanks, the meeting is adjourned.